And let's go ahead and get our city of North Plains City Council meeting. Regular session meeting, Monday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock. And we do have Council Payton on Zoom and let's go ahead and stand up for the one.
Do the white of the United States of America and do the Republican motion, saying, "One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all."
So just give me that I am on the other side of a migraine, so please bear with me as I navigate our agenda tonight. Roll call, please. Thank you. Mayor Linehan?
Present.
Counselor Page?
Present.
Counselor Kendall?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Payton?
Here.
And Counselors Martinez and Sheldon are excused.
Great. Thanks, Lori. Consent agenda, we have the approval of tonight's agenda. And we also have the approval of the August first, twenty twenty-two City Council minutes. Are there any corrections or additions that we need to be aware of for the minutes? If not, I'll enter to motion.
I move through. Who will be consent agenda?
A second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you. Item six on our agenda is public comment, and this is the type when we wish the folks in the public, if they wish to discuss anything that's not on our agenda. And I do have a public testimony this evening from Nicole Willigard. So Nicole, if you would like to come up to the podium, and if you choose to. That's good. And then let's know what's on your mind. Yes, ma'am.
Nicole, could you speak a little closer? So thank you for taking the time to listen to me. First of all, I appreciate that. First, I'd like to say before we end the statement that this is not a complaint against the Garlic Festival. We both enjoy the festival, but this is regarding the city's traffic control plan around the event. We've been residents along Lasco Street for the past twelve years, and for the last eleven years, the city of North Plains has provided a Type Two barricade, which is a sandwich board style barricade for our entire street between three-eleventh and three-fifteenth. This year, none were dropped off, so we contacted the city, and this is a safety issue for residents and pedestrians. As the church parking lot for the Garlic Festival breaks in an abundance of traffic in this area. After multiple attempts to contact the city and getting a return call late Friday afternoon, we were told they no longer had enough barricades, and that, quote, "If we do it for you, we have to do it for everyone." Which is simply untrue. Due to this being one of the main access areas to the event, the city can provide more traffic control in this area for that reason. He also said he will look into the issue and see what work can be done. About fifteen minutes later, my husband received a call from the police chief. There was some confusion about our concern. He seemed to think we wanted the street closed. We shared that all we wanted was some barricades so the pedestrians had a safe area to walk. My husband and I were kind of confused as to why Public Works Matter was thrust upon the police chief, as it seemed a waste of time and totally unnecessary. The police chief operated to verify and check it out, which we appreciated, and that was the end of the resolution. The lack of barricades on our street was only part of the problem. The city did not have any advanced warnings for road closures or detours set up, which are required by the Oregon Temporary Traffic Control Handbook, which Public Works should have. The result from this lack of signage provided another dangerous situation. While awaiting a phone call and due to the lack of signage during Garlic Festival, a dump truck made its way down our street, which I have video of. Dump truck was unaware of the road closure for the festival, so it made its way down to three-eleventh, and in the middle of the traffic attempting to get into the parking lot, the pedestrian traffic and residential traffic, it ended up having to back up and turn around in this congested area. A simple safety issue that could have been avoided had there been proper signs and detours. We had multiple neighbors share their frustration. The lack of signs for road closures created vehicles turning around to people's yards and wherever they could find necessary. We also watched multiple incidences take place between pedestrians and traffic trying to pass in both directions. I understand the Events Association is in charge of the event, however, Public Works is the one in charge of putting together and properly executing the traffic control plan for the event to make sure both the event goers and residents are kept safe. I'd like to impose a resolution for the issue. I suggest the city communicate with the church to switch the paid parking lot to the west lot and keep the east lot for church attendees only. This would then allow the city to perform a road closure just past the west lot and would allow for pedestrians to be kept safe for the majority of traveling cars as they made their way to the festival. The city needs to start putting up signage about advanced warning for road closures in the area of the event. I'd also suggest the city look into purchasing or utilizing portable variable message boards. These could be placed a week prior to the event to notify the traveling public of upcoming road closures that are going to take place in the area. When the city told my husband they no longer had the left to perform the needed traffic control, I'd also like to make you aware of the CPAWC or the Cooperative Public Agencies of Washington County. This program allows the city to borrow needed equipment when necessary. The city of North Plains is a part of this group. The city could have easily contacted the organization to ask for more traffic control if they had properly planned ahead with their signage chase. Lastly, I believe with a proper traffic control plan around the entire event, it would event area, it will make all involved a lot safer and a lot less stressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before you move, Juan, I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention coming tonight, preparing. And also, I just wanted to make sure that the other counselors had an opportunity to ask you a question if, or, you know, if it had was. So Counselor Smith and then Counselor Page.
It's like you did put a lot of work into what you did.
Yeah.
And I think something that we need, the city we need to look at. I'm pretty sure that's exactly what's going to happen because this year, the Garlic Festival did go quite a few more than normally ever does.
Right.
So there's going to probably be a lot of updating what we do.
Well, that was our disappointment, was this year wasn't even met with the same steps as in years past, and this year would be compared to years past.
Right.
Counselor Page?
So thank you for bringing this to our attention. If it's not brought up, everything says it's great and it was done again, right? So thank you for bringing it up. It's something that needs to be well thought out, and it will be thought out next time. We will look at that. The last few years, it hasn't been a problem, and it's only this year that the problem happened?
This year, there was a lot more pedestrians in the roadway due to a lack of barricades. Also, it's a traffic safety issue for residents attempting to leave their driveways with cars parking on the streets. Again, I know it's a public street, cars can park there, but for the last eleven years, we've had safety boards to protect that, gives the pedestrians a safe walkway. And this year, they didn't have that. They were attempting to walk in the grass, which, you know, they were able to do on the church side. But without those no park signs, vehicles are parking in the places pedestrians walk, and so the only safe place left to walk is the road. And people hit that parking lot and decide they don't want to pay five dollars, and so they try to turn around in the middle of the whole bit. So without those barricades in the parking spaces or the pedestrians to walk, it just puts them in the middle of the chaos.
Great. Next. Anyone else? Counselor Kendall? Counselor Payton?
No, thank you.
So pedestrians, were pedestrians a problem or just the traffic? Both?
The problem was there was no safe place for the pedestrians to be with the traffic. The traffic was as usual. The only difference was this, well, this year, you know, there's no signs prior to the area to say this road is closed, and so all that traffic is attempting to find a way close to the festival. Or a dump truck, coming from north most likely, ended up coming down the street having no idea that the road was closed.
So the sign was the same other years it was this year?
It was not.
It was not? Okay. That's part of it, so I'm unaware of what happened, so.
Yeah.
I just know there's a lot of people, and it was a great event, so.
Yeah. So I know you typed everything out, and I'm not sure if you would feel comfortable. Would you be okay giving more notes to Lori? I know we've got it recorded, but it might be helpful for her. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Nicole. Really appreciate it. All right. We'll do our best to try to keep you informed for future planning. All right. Well, tonight is Stafford Fortnight and.
Thank you. Thank you. It's much better. I have an exciting announcement to start off with, which is that I got final number of the deposit from a book sale from the Garlic Festival from the Friends. They deposited six thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. By far the biggest sale they had, having a comfortable, you know, air-conditioned place probably helped with that, plus two years' worth of extra books for not having it.
That's awesome.
So that was really great news that I got today out of the press. And also found out today, we received a grant, we'll get one free copy each of all the third, third grade through fifth grade OBOB books from, from, through the state library. So that'll be great, because we have a lot of OBOB participants in the community. But mainly what I want to talk to you about today is the draft of our strategic plan, which you have in my report. This is a plan that we started back in October of last year with community questions and then other steps to come up with our strategic plan, which consists of a new mission and vision, and then focus areas with goals under each focus area for the library. Staff are still developing the objectives to carry out these goals, but the published version of the plan is ready and here for your review today. Is there anything in particular you'd like me to go over?
Counselor Payton?
No, I'm okay, but thank you.
I appreciate Counselor Smith for joining in our stakeholder meeting where we made the vision statement and worked on the goals and along with just many other stakeholders who aren't present. We had a consultant through the State Library of Oregon who led this process for us. It's free consulting from the State Library or libraries. And that was really wonderful to have her expertise to lead us through my first strategic plan that I oversee, you know, oversee as a director. So we appreciate that.
You know, I know I sat in on a library meeting and gave a little feedback.
About the vision.
About feedback, about the vision and that sort of thing. So it's really great to see it in writing, to see this product. I know there's a lot of love and attention put into it, and I want to thank you so much for doing that, like everybody involved with this process.
So staff are all very proud of it, and we have staff working on compiling ways to tell the data story as we reach our objectives and towards the goals that I can show you.
Yeah. It's awesome. Great. Thank you. I was really impressed when I looked at the service area, I think when I looked at that service area and that, it really kind of put some things in perspective for me as far as our outreach. I mean, because you present all these numbers to us, right? Like every month, we get all these numbers about people coming and going, and it's, you know, like just all these people we touch, right? But then when you look at the map and you actually look at that, it just goes, wow, that's a, that's a huge amount of space. So, and there's a lot of folks that live up there. So anyhow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good job.
Thank you. That is the extent of my report this evening. I was mainly the strategic plan.
Any other comments or questions for Robin? Actually, I do have a comment about these.
Oh.
Okay. Could you tell us a little bit about what's going on over there?
Sure. We made efforts to empty out the yellow house, which is stale, and so rather than restore these books that didn't work sold, they're going to be picked up by organization Better World Books tomorrow. They do, they donate, sell, recycle, you know, kind of depending on the books, but they'll, they'll take them from here, and so the Friends can just work with their newer inventory.
Yeah. And so Counselor Payton, I know you might not be able to see this, but there are five pallets full of, rather than large boxes, I would say, what is that? I don't know. Four by four boxes full of books. So there's going to be organizations around, is it a national?
It is a national organization.
National organization that will get some much-needed books, and then will also then recycle. But it's a pretty impressive. We'll take a picture and share it with you so you can, you can see it. I know that you'll appreciate that.
So how is it a challenge, Jack, about it?
They become prepared. It's been organized through the Friends. They're coming tomorrow morning. They were supposed to come.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So you must have a lot of breathing room now, huh?
Yeah, the goal was to clear out all the inventory that was more than, I think, a year old that they had. So.
Do you think it's sold as many as you have sitting here?
I, I would need to go take a look.
Yeah. It's good. Yeah, there's a lot of people here. Our hours in here.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Nice. So this started to make me think, when I saw this and then heard your report on that, it made me think about, so I attended the Oregon Mayors Association conference this weekend in Newport, and I actually talked to a lot of mayors from very small communities, like a hundred and twenty people, three hundred people, and that kind of thing. And this now just made me wonder, like, I wonder if they even have library services or any way to be able to share that kind of, you know, books and things like that with their, their people in their community. And so does this organization that you spoke about, do they partner with states and try to touch smaller communities?
I'm not sure.
It just started to make me think about that.
I can send you some information about the organization.
Okay. That would be great, because I can think of about five cities and mayors that I spoke with this weekend that are under five hundred people, and now it makes me wonder if they have, you know, if they have a library, they have access to, you know, book exchange and things like that, you know, and it might be a great opportunity, you know, to partner, to be able to at least let them know that this organization is out there and that they might use that as a resource.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Yeah.
I got a question. Sorry about that.
Okay.
On Timorit, near the school?
Pardon?
On Timorit, near the North Plains Elementary School, there's one of those little community libraries that were set up.
Oh.
Was that by the library? I was like, oh, that's pretty, it's a pretty nice one, too. I had no idea who did it. It must have been our work, so I put it up. Was that something that they?
We were not involved in that one, but I, I mean, it's common to see them. Are they, is it on school property?
No, it's on the fence going down the, there's a little sign that says, "Ban Radisson Estates," and on the fence right there, just, so we just put it up there.
Sure.
Somebody, Jeff Miller, you're like, wow, snappy. All right. So I'm going to go pull these books up there in there.
Sure. Free book tonight for your, like I said, your counselor duties. So Counselor Page might be doing like a dumpster die. Oh, no. My excuse. Okay. I, I saw that Counselor Payton said something in the chat, anything that we needed to address.
All right. Said, no, sorry, I can't do that.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Robin. Up next is Chief Axon.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselors. Going over last month's, looks like we had two hundred thirty-one calls for service or self-initiated activity. Really, there's a stat, you can look, on the second page, it was kind of bouncing around. There's the hours of the day from April to June, that's the correct one, where it's last month, I had a long, long rack in there, so that's from last month's correction. Looking at the stats, self-initiated was obviously up. And then again, that's got a bunch of hours that we're working at overnight, which was the nighttime hours, we did sixty-six this last month, with a total of, so far year-to-date, two hundred ninety-eight hours of extended night coverage. Again, those sixty, and those sixty-six hours is almost self-initiated and traffic stops. No major calls are coming in. Through the citation, you'll see they're up quite a bit, and again, that's leftover from the Live Golf Event, which was your bow on north, the Massachusetts speakers that we were dealing with. So that's why those are up. And then really, we helped with the Fourth of July parade, just got done with the Garlic Festival, and really, there's only one inch of the Garlic Festival that I'm aware, which was a fight with some retro stats, and we made one arrest there. But other than that, for having as many people there, there were virtually no issues.
Wow.
So that was very good.
That's awesome. Good.
Other than that, I'm open to questions.
Counselor, Counselor Page, Counselor Smith?
What kind of activity are we seeing tonight as far as the, because it did go us? What do you guys find? Is it drone drivers? Is it?
No, it's, they're going out with suspicious vehicles. Nothing in generates reports, just checking on suspicious cars, maybe some people walking around, just contacting people at night.
That's, that's fine. Also, at the office, I was volunteering on, through the Saturday night, I thought I had two fights. First fight, I was gonna maybe have it, I thought, I thought myself, oh, you know, maybe I should stick in there, because I'm a dumb. And then I see the biggest cop I've ever seen walk past, and I'm, oh yeah, he's got this. This amount of guys have, all right.
I think he was here last.
Yeah. I'm like, oh, I'm fine. I'm fine. I'll go back to.
Seven feet tall person.
Yeah. So anyways, good job having, having, having him there.
I'm unaware of a second fight. I know one was called in and we dealt with it right away. In fact, I was listening to it, I heard it was called in about the time that the old man, sorry, who's worked down here before, was, was working that night, he'd already contacted a guy, just escorting him out by the time the call actually came in, you know, into it. So that was taken care of. Unfortunately, he changed his shirt and tried to get back into the vehicle, so. He was taken care of. But I'm unaware of a second fight, if there was a second fight.
Yeah, so I got, I got a negative second. We took him out.
I'm surprised we didn't get more complaints about parking. People's, I think the Garlic Fest- Festival kind of flew past all records by far. Like a double from last year, I'm not sure. But I know there's a lot of police here on Friday and Saturday, but I didn't see hardly any on Sunday. So I'm just wondering.
Well, we scale it down. I try and scale it based on really the peak times when people are going to be there, and I don't think Saturday is kind of a winding down event. So there was, there was officers here that just weren't.
Yeah, I thought it was winding down. Well, you have to worry about parking when you come back on Sunday, and the parking was horrible.
Yes.
And people were parked in the area, so I'm surprised there was not more complaints. Is there something we could do next year, maybe a couple of months beforehand, and discuss what this woman was talking about?
Well, I do think it's a good debrief point for the festival in general. I know the city manager, we were just talking about this morning, is parking for this event is becoming a premium, and that's in the city in general. So there's going to have to be a revamp and completely look at how exactly the parking works. And I'd like to look at the church and see if there's a better way to do that. I'm not sure there is. And maybe if it's adjusting the vendor or doing something to, to alleviating some of it. So I don't know if there's a good answer, because the reality is North Plains around Jesse Mae is just not designed to have a gazillion people and cars trying to get in the same area at the same time. There's no, there's no good answer. And again, I understand the frustration after I spoke to them on the phone, but that same thing that they're dealing with right there, they were dealing with other, in other areas around Jesse Mae. So it wasn't just her neighborhood or her house, it just was a little different for her, this year than what they've experienced, but obviously they're frustrated than other people are. So it needs to be looked at. End of the day, it needs to be rectified and maybe figured out better, even if it's pushing it out and pushing it forward somewhere else.
And that'll be the topic of the debrief. I mean, that's going to be a very significant topic, the debrief, so.
Along with having more garlic chicken, I believe, I believe that was.
Oh.
The big, there was a big problem.
Yeah.
A bee to the, to the parking was, was going on chicken. Which I think is fantastic, there's so many people in it. It is good chicken.
Yeah.
Well, they ran out twice. I heard they ran out like every day.
Yeah.
And on Sunday.
You ran out twice when that was in line.
Yes.
On Friday.
No, on Sunday, they were out like by like ten o'clock, so it was, or you know, like by noon is what I heard, so.
So it was reported by several vendors. I, so I came back Sunday about one, one-thirty, and then I visited our vendors and other folks, and there were many people actually from other states here that, and especially the, you know, Gilroy was, you know, the biggest, you know, Garlic Festival, I guess lodged in the, you know, in the United States. Anyhow, a lot of folks that didn't get to go to Gilroy actually came here to North Plains. Another thing, North Plains Garlic Festival got some unexpected advertisement, because there was a, online, there was this article about the Garlic Festivals, and they used our highway sign, and they, and then they put North Plains as the first one, right? So, so we had some really spectacular advertisement, unsolicited. So I think that also really excited a lot of people who love garlic and love that sort of thing.
My wife posted that, but.
Yeah.
And I think she's still trying to recuperate. She should have visited.
I mean, it's cool, it's great, it's awesome, but we've got some things to talk about.
Yeah, exactly. And one complaint, just, I guess now that we're, if we're on the Garlic Festival still, the parade went really well. I thought it was, seemed a lot longer, and I thought it was, was really nice and worked out really well, so, but the parade was.
I think we had a big miss, though. We didn't have a colored guard at the beginning.
Yeah. That was the only one, resident pointed it out and said, oh, thank you. Yes, we missed that, so.
We should have the Boy Scouts do it. But I'm thinking there's other color guards we can use, too. I've seen them at our Veterans Park. I think a lot of people would like to.
Yes.
There could be a lot of people that want to do it, different organizations or something. So maybe we got to really think about that next year, too.
Man, what is it, the briefing, man? What is it?
We have it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's Monday. At the festival.
Well, it'll be, okay.
Last week of August.
Yeah. Yeah. We're shooting for it, yeah, yeah, we're shooting for it, so. But any feedback is very, very appreciated.
The one thing missing is a band.
Yeah.
That would be fantastic.
That would be fantastic, if we got that.
Marching band would make a, makes a parade.
It would be really nice, like Glencoe.
Yeah, high school.
They've been there.
It is summertime, and again, another.
Yeah.
It is summertime, however, all the bands at this time of year, because daily doubles and all that's going on for football, the bands have been practicing because football's coming up. So there's a good chance you could potentially get.
Yeah, well, they need to get them, get them now and get it.
I, I, I did the, I did the double days for football, but I had a band too, so.
Well, I'm gonna be taking ukulele lessons. With Emily in September, so I don't know, you know, I could do a solo.
Yeah.
No, we're not. I'm gonna try it. We could all do ukulele.
Yeah.
Come on, guys.
There you go.
Good. Any other questions or comments for Chief? Council Pavin? You're good?
I'm good, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Chief. Alright, Finance, Bill.
Good evening, everyone. Today, this afternoon, actually, the Finance Department report is sent out. It's the first month of the new fiscal year, so I can assure you, nothing exciting really happened in the month of July, and that's the way we like it. What I'll do is, is draw your attention to the Water Fund Account Status Report, actually. Nothing exciting or unusual in the General Fund, Streets Fund or Water Fund, really, Water Fund. The really, really warm weather in July, we seem to have very definitely and unusually higher water usage revenue. So that's not a bad thing, but of course, that balances out the lower winter months, but it looks like the year is off to a better than projected start so far with water, water fee revenue. Okay, July 1, the new system was officially, went online to let folks have a better interface, better experience, and far more control over their water accounts and payments, and looking at their payment history and making things far easier. We've got a lot of good reviews for it, but we, you know, we transitioned over to a new system, so we have to pick up some, we've been working with residents with that. So as far as overdue balances, we're back up to just over $10,000 or an overdue balance is 30 days and over as of the end of July. We had, we just had an amazing June, where people paying down balances, and then in July, between some not being super smooth for themselves. And then just a number of accounts went from 30 days or less current to 30 to 60 overdue, and that's just what we experienced. So the nice thing is, we don't have any, any overdue balances over 90 days. We're continuing to see that, so people who are very overdue, we, we don't have that problem anymore. We really just have accounts that are tripping over 30-day overdue, and that's kind of what we're seeing, we saw quite a few of them in July. So that's kind of the news about overdue water accounts, the main thing is, though, we don't have long overdue problems so much anymore. That's been, Jen and Bailey have been all over that, and working with people on payment plans and getting people, getting better communication going on there, so that's been working nicely. Okay, so as far as other activities in the Finance Department, we are breaking the provided for FY21. So that's been keeping everybody extremely busy, and part of the explanation for the financial report that we received today. Anything else going on? We have, we have one of two payments in from the Taco Bell, Taco Bell Development, for their system development charges, the transportation development tax, so that's a positive thing. 110 lots, residential lots at Brinco through July 31st have paid development fees, SDC, TBT, that's one thing, so they're moving right along. And that's kind of the, the highlights of July for.
Um, so I had a question about the Brinco building. Can you, can you just talk about briefly, talk about the process on that? I mean, we've processed these fees, right? But when will we realize these fees and then have to then, I mean, I know there's always a refund, refund that's in that as well.
Well, basically, they, the Brinco applies for building permit for each home. Washington County reaches out to us for every bill, or they're supposed to, for every building permit. They're supposed to reach out to us and say, have they paid their system development charges and their transportation development tax, and the other fees that you regularly charge? When our, or any other developer building something, yes, it's a check to us that provides comprehensive fees for that lot, for that building permit. And we, and we notify the county, and they get a, get a building permit, they begin construction, basically. Premiers, construction starts, and a few months later, the, the home gets to the point of certificate of occupancy, and then kind of signals when the home will be heavily marketed and probably sold, not forever longer after. That's generally speaking, the, the process of. May I just add one thing? What you were referring to as a refund is probably when they get a, an agreed-upon credit.
Credit.
Like an SDC credit for building a park to and above above the city design standards, or they get, you know, credits for their normal work of power, that's not adjacent to their property. Those are usually reconciled at the end, because that work is just going on so long that held on for all five phases for that road.
So that reconciliation will occur at the end of the phase?
For that road, it will, yeah. We've actually received a request for some parks, SDC credits for parking it in the first phase for a little bit, so we've had it for a couple of weeks now. It rolls through each of the phases.
You know, and I asked that question because in the past, when I think of, you know, G R Horton and other, other communities, subdivisions that we brought in, and then we've seen SDC credits and refunds and that sort of thing. I just was kind of curious about the timeline of that, and when people see that, they, they ask about that, like, what does that mean? Are they getting a refund, you know?
So that's something people ask me.
I've had a few people ask about it over the years, not recently, but over the years, yeah.
It, it kind of depends on the phasing in development, so if you look at the large Laurelwood subdivision in Cornelius, for instance, they built a lot of that horizontal infrastructure before they started building homes. And if you do that, then you know how much that cost is, so I think of Laurelwood, some of the things they did, like they were building out concrete parking aprons and doing 10-foot sidewalks, you know, in certain stretches, they'll probably get credits for those, and they know that. Before they start building the homes, those are credit-worthy, so those are STCs, they wouldn't have to be paying on the homes. Like with Sunset Ridge, with this, the improvements are going on simultaneously, so you can get some credits, be reconciling at the end. And just so I can touch on this too, the, the process, the development process. Washington County Building Permit, Building Department does the permitting for the buildings. What happened with Taco Bell was the first time I've seen it happen in my time, it's probably happened four, within the four years I've been here. They'll always ask us, have they paid the fees, and do they have land use approval for whatever the development is? And we'll send them some sort of correspondence that bring a letter, letter form. Sometimes it could be for 10 lots, you know, yes, they've done it all, but for Taco Bell, they definitely would, and they did. What happened with that development, though, is after he went through the land use approval to beat the, sort of the weather, the winter weather coming at that time. Roll tide paid the STCs on that lot, they were given pre-authorization to do some grading on the entire thing, and then he then he sold off that piece for Taco Bell, sold it to Taco Bell, they hadn't paid their SDC, so it's kind of a snap through where you're typically not selling off another piece after you've already had the land use approval, even though we do a Taco Bell's own owner. So it was just some discommunication between the county and the city. And we talked about that with them, to kind of make sure that we catch that, the need approval process, so that's when that was a, and then usual occurrence there.
One question, Andy. So when Brinco did this development, do we have any idea what the, what those credits would be, what, what plans are being put into place? Do we have any kind of, without just, okay, here's the bill, this is what we spent on those overages? I mean, city, we should have a kind of a basis of what we think we're gonna have to pay out eventually, I would think.
Correct, yeah, we don't know it down to
Right.
the exact dollar, we don't even have it down to the exact thousand dollar.
Right.
But we do know this was all part of the master plan, we knew that you will get some credits for building out all of North Avenue, you know, because for, for the city's conditions of approval, they'd only have to build out half-street improvement in front of that entire area. So basically, school to 3J, and that's it, they're doing both sides, the length of North Avenue. So look good credit for that other portion, that was agreed upon in the master plan, and like for water, they upsized one line. Our typical neighborhood street water size line would be eight-inch, they went to 12-inch to get more, more, more fire flow. It's kind of, you know, helps feed the school more, it doesn't suit when there's, so they get that difference. But those are all agreed upon, and we know, we know those going in.
And I take it 3J would be instrumental in the.
We process those together.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, they'll, they'll submit some engineering estimates for what these are gonna be, we kind of go room with a fine tooth comb.
Great.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Bill on the financial report?
I only want, is this sent out to our emails? This will be published for the, for the public, is it a package?
Or technically?
Because it came, I received it after the packet, it will go into the minutes of the meeting as an attachment. Should we have that? No, I, I, I'm glad you said something. I, I know we're all busy and that sort of thing, but can, we'll get it ahead of time, maybe, maybe next month. I'm sure.
We don't have an audit going.
I, I, yeah, you mentioned audit, which is totally understandable, but.
Phil's been doing a lot of work with the state on the EOA, to, they have a lot of high maintenance effort.
Well, it's, it's there, it's transparent, it's all laid, no problem, but it's there, and it's no red flags as far as I'm concerned, so it's great, but, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, I was just gonna add, Andrew reminded me, speaking of the state, with the Washington County Visitors Bureau are going to partner with us on funding for assistance for the rare intern. So they'll be partnering with us on that, so that's a nice move today.
Do we, I, I know that I got a message from Andy about the rare, like looking for housing and that sort of thing, and.
Yeah, if anyone has a one-bedroom apartment or a room to live, let me know.
A rare volunteer needs a place to stay, so if you know anyone that might be renting a room, or AU, or an apartment, please let Andy know. Okay? Any other comments or questions? Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, the community development plan, like 3J's report, any questions or comments for Andy on that?
Question, man, 313, who's that on the north side of the commercial, uh, first, yeah, commercial street, or is it the south? Where is that?
That would be south.
South.
Yeah, yeah, we actually have the state grant, $100,000 to do. It's a small city's a lot, my grant on 313, so we're gonna do, just, just like cottage, that three-quarters of that street needs water size, water main replacements, we're gonna do that, pave it. We're also gonna do kind of some other improvements on that, Andrew and I had a three-hour meeting, 3J last week, and went through probably seven projects, a lot of the design for these indoor sidewalk projects. And 313 will get some sidewalks to, kind of for the Veterans Park all the way up to. High.
We're glad it comes through, yeah, thank you.
I had a question about Purple Park. And so staff is going to be removing the existing play structure.
That's what we've talked about, and that's what the Parks Board has talked about. Doug and I actually have a meeting first week of September, and that's where I want some direction from the, from the Parks Board on it. The thought is, we remove that there, it's just a green space, and there's room to put a play structure over Louis Wince Park, and then that way, that area in town can still have some sort of play structure for kids to play on.
So we're reusing that?
Louis Wince is it's over behind the post office.
Fantastic, that, that was small, yeah.
Okay. Reusing that? We'll take it out. I, I kind of fear, since half of that structure has been underwater for half of its life, what that might look like. But speaking of that, though, we're gonna see if we can salvage, see what we can do for salvaging, salvaging the play quarter here, because the Christian church wants it, so. Try this week as carefully, I met with Bryn, and she understands it, it kind of comes apart as we're taking it out, you know, because it's sunk in concrete, but we can do there, but, yeah, um, that's, I, I want to get some direction from the Parks Board and City Council on that part. You know, and then that's something that they're. Late summer, fall.
Yeah, that, that's, it's always been top of mind for some folks, and certainly understand the predicament that we're in with that park, you know, but if we can, even if it's just a, a green space, maybe something usable. You know, during the summertime would be awesome, totally understand the decision.
Yeah, I mean, it's fenced on two sides, so one more, it could, yeah.
Sure, water park.
The water park.
That's the, that's the common one I hear.
Drop one.
You know, birds and other, I mean, it could be a wildlife sanctuary, you know?
Who's gonna be at the Parks Board, you know that, right?
Well, it is a beloved area, and I certainly remember that about 14 years ago, how that area was quite there were, the, the kids who actually named that park are now adults with babies, but they, they specifically named that park, and they have a, a love and affiliation for it, so. We'll get it figured out. Alright, um, anything else for that report? Alright, let's move on to ordinance AA, the first reading of ordinance number 480 is the amending board member terms from two to four.
Lori.
Yeah, this is actually, well, yeah, I wrote the staff report, so.
Lori did.
It just says city staff.
This is something that the Parks Board have talked about, been talking about for a while, to bring their particular board in mind with all the others, to go from two years to four years, and I do know that Lori would appreciate that, because it's they're not running for Congress, you know, campaigning every two years, it's just, especially on support.
Makes sense.
And that's something they're all.
Please.
I move to your first reading of ordinance number 480.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, wish you carried. Hearing none, motion carried. All right, ordinance number four eight zero is an ordinance amending chapter three one point six two of the North Plains Municipal Code regarding parks board member terms of office. All right, so now that I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four eight oh.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number four eight zero.
Don't say it. All right, I'm first by Council Page, second by Council Kidno. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, thank you. Down dirty, sweet. Um, item nine, new business, nothing to report, unfinished business, nothing to report there. And then we're down to reports, city manager report. Andy, any highlights you want?
No real highlights, but yeah, like Phil mentioned it earlier, we have a rare volunteer, I did a supervisor training last week. We have an orientation with him tomorrow, he'll be here September twelfth, so just trying to get him get him, get him, his details worked out for this year here to work on downtown planning. We have two planner interviews on Friday, both very well qualified. One runs a planning division in the town in Washington, and another one that does land use for a kind of a building consultancy, if that's experienced, doing land use and planning in Oregon. So what the candidates doing some reference checks this week. Public Works Director is still advertised, we do have a couple applicants, want to give until after rate rebate to review and see if they're around three, do those interviews again. Otherwise, yeah, I saw Patty today, we agreed the sort of debrief on not just the garlic festival, even summer season, probably the weekend of twenty ninth. And welcome back. Baseball tomorrow night, Wednesday night, right?
Wednesday, yeah, yeah.
Section.
Section five.
Yeah, it's gonna be warm.
Yeah, because I think where we're at, the sun's gonna hit us, blind us for a while.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. Um, so it looks like you have the the writer from the Pamplin Media coming out next week for a tour.
Wednesday, actually, yeah, he's gonna be here this week.
Hey.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, he really wanted to learn about the levy, well, you know, we're gonna put it off, but I'm happy, I've been meaning to catch up with you. Those, those people are busy because they have to cover three, you know, Forest Grove things, Cornelius North Plains, Hillsborough, there's a lot, but so this will be his first time out.
Yeah, and I think he's, I think he's fairly new to the area, but so that'll be, it'll be great that he thinks about it's kind of a way to land and what's going on here in the plains, that'd be great. So yeah, Wednesday is Community Day at the Hillsborough Hawks baseball game. So that'll be fun, I do know that Stinky will be coming. He, with the heat and everything like that, though, I'm gonna make sure that he, he might only do the, the first pitch, you know, to throw it in the first pitch, just because of the heat. He's, he's gonna be a trooper, he said he's gonna be a trooper, trying to do the best that he can. Obviously, people are gonna want to take pictures of him, I know, I saw the pictures on Facebook of the parade with Barley and Stinky, and so he's getting a little, you know, airtime there, so people are gonna be excited to see him and you know, kids, people are gonna want pictures, so I encourage them that I'll, I'll be his handler and hold his hand just to make sure I can navigate him, but I don't think he'll be in costume for the majority of the time.
He's kind of like a proud pop.
Yeah. Right, yeah, yeah, we talked about that yesterday, so.
Looked like a proud pop.
Yeah, so that new costume is outstanding.
There's a lot of, the only thing I thought saw that was kind of where some of the kids like run behind him and grab his tail.
Oh.
So they're gonna be careful there.
Grabs giants.
Got it. Well, um, there's, there's, I think the, the Hops organization, I have a meeting with the Hops, a couple of folks from the PR section, the PR department from the Hops, and they want to talk to us about, you know, just maybe working collaboratively with, you know, having you know, Stinky there or whatever, maybe they'll, you know, sponsor the festival or not, so the doors are open and, you know, we'll see what that relationship kind of turns into, so more to come.
I'm not going to make it because I have to work that, that pretty much time, I've got so much time and I already went to the game for rental. But throwing out the first pitch is one of my freckles, things to do.
Well, I, I pulled out the mitt in the baseball and I'm practicing and I, it's my understanding that the mayor of Bang, she's been practicing too, but she did practice with her daughter today, and she texted me and she said that her daughter threw the ball back to her and it hit her in the head and the ear. And I'm like, Stephanie, I think you need a catcher's mid mask or whatever, so. I don't, I, I hope she's fine, she said she was fine, but yeah, so it'll be fun, you know?
Masked, like a changer, but it's still
Well, if I can throw it ninety feet or sixty feet, whatever it is, I'll, you know, get it, get it to the catcher, I'll be happy about that, but it'll be a lot of fun, a great opportunity for the community to be spotlighted and, yeah, that'll be, it'll be a big time, it'll be a good time. And any other council reports? Counselors been?
I'll be maybe once or twice. I see that they have a new city manager, Cornelius. Saw that happen. The second thing was, I'll go, it's a small thing, garlic festivals, the restrooms. And I think my wife had to take care of quite a few times, is that something that people supposed to take care of, the city to take care of?
Which, which restroom, the Port Honeys or?
The restrooms here.
I come here, was checking them each day, but he wasn't, he came out there all day, I mean, those were, there were so many people and yeah, I'm sure they're ripe for abuse.
I thought those were locked.
No.
Should we have locked and then make sure they use these over here or when?
We, we, we had some opinions that people wanted them open twenty-four seven, you know, and we're like, well, at nighttime, when it's beer garden time, the much closer route is going to be, you know, the port of my inside us, we had them open during the day. Yeah.
I wouldn't, it only need to be checked pretty often.
So, well, you know, the thing is, the port of, you can't like change a baby in the port of my tubes, and those are nice and comfortable or something like that, take care of a kid, there's a mirror.
Yeah, yeah, there's the the built in, that is a better for a lot of things. However, the, the huge influence of people coming in here and it's ripe for a reason, damage it just too much, so maybe just lock those, I would like to see what you have to do that obviously, because when you have
Man, what you're saying, I just, I, I think that would be exciting.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be a part of the debrief, to be perfectly honest with you.
Yeah, I tell you, we'll, we'll talk that over.
Yeah.
I got one more. How far? I think Andy's gonna be happy to listen, but one thing I noticed when I went to the banks, City of Banks, was the mayor saying when she got, was coming home, most things she's proud of, they did a new city sign. And so I was thinking with the water towers, and then he's brought up that, do we have any designs? So I came up with four. And so I thought, maybe if I did that, maybe there'd be some more interest in it, I don't know. Four here? If anyone wants to look at it?
Absolutely.
Centrinosity? But I think I know, I probably just don't give up for another four years.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not, it's the right place for, for making noise, you know, it's a long ways off.
I mean, we could even put out a a kind of a RFP to the community and have kids and families get involved with a potential design
Yeah.
too, not saying that what you've created is, is bad, good, or indifferent, but if we we, it's something we could open up to the whole community and say, hey, we're doing this, you know?
She's asking that kids can do a better job. I think it is.
I mean, it could be something kind of fun for the whole community, they're kind of up there, rub around and, and do both.
Because we've got two, one
Right.
with the one coming in, if we have Big City in North Plains
Yeah.
on the garlic festival.
Yeah.
I was thinking more of it.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea, yeah. Want to spearhead that?
I'll put my boss in charge.
Oh.
Just one caveat if I may, that, that was a good painter down, you know, that did something here a few years ago, so I think she's got to be first in line to if she, if she's interested in ever to do.
Well, they've got these computer ones that they just, do the computer wrapping, guards and stuff, and you could do a fantastic job real reasonably
Really?
without painting them.
Yeah.
They'll last long.
Interesting.
Any other reports from council?
Hey, how's it going? Yeah, I just wanted to share on Wednesday, I attended the neighborhood meeting for the Far West Fiber Facility that's on West Union and two ninety second, near the HD Fowler site. And just some overwhelming feedback from the community, there are about forty some participants at this meeting and a lot of people just giving feedback about not being supportive of the facility that's going in there and just some opposition with another recycling facility, and then also opposition towards such a large building that's being proposed that's not even related to Far West Fibers, it's, it's actually just a spec building. It's about two hundred and forty thousand square feet that has sixty dock doors. And when I had asked during this meeting what it was being marketed for, it was unclear at this time because it was a preliminary design, but some of the discussion had mentioned potentially a distribution facility, something that could fit in Amazon, et cetera, et cetera. So then there was a lot of questions about traffic and where that might come down, you know, West Union. So I think the overwhelming feedback was really just people wanting to know about this, and I did mention during the meeting that it was posted on the city website, city Facebook, next door, lots of avenues, but the overwhelming response, especially from the neighborhood, HOA and Sunset Ridge, was that they would like communication to, sent to the HOA itself. So I said I would pass that message along to our city recorder, Lori, and I'll try to be cognizant as well when there's an upcoming public meeting to send you a reminder, just to let the HOA know, as know as well. And that is all I have.
Thank you for that update, Council Paper, I appreciate that. So I had a couple of quick questions, my first question to the council is, I know some time ago, the folks doing, performing our audit sent out an email with questionnaire, and I was just kind of curious if any of you responded to that questionnaire regarding the audit. Okay, it's not a, it's not a big thing, but it just something when I read, Bill's reported, it kind of checked a box in my, I'm like, gosh, I wonder I filled out the application and sent it in, but I wasn't sure if anyone else had done that, not saying that I had seen any, you know, they just asked you some general questions, but wondered if anyone did that, and then secondly, did you all give Andy feedback on the LOC legislative agenda?
Yeah.
You did?
I give it a
Okay, okay. Can you still accept?
It was last Friday, but they, they want them in this Friday, oh, I forgot to mention it before, I'm gonna be out of the office on Friday and next week, family reunion in Ohio. If any more come in in the next day or two, we'll put them all together, but incidentally, but yeah, if you remember to.
Yeah, okay. So nobody else has done it?
Three, one, two, three, have.
Great, okay.
I did it. Just to show you. Okay.
Okay. And, and then the question that I'm gonna be asking the counselors and probably making just individual calls to each one of you or just a meet and greet, coffee, whatever. But the Oregon Mayor's Association has created, has created a task force, a homelessness task force. And so this is statewide. And we are putting together, um we're putting together kind of a joint effort statement to the state of Oregon for the next legislative session twenty twenty-three with our asks, right? We want the, basically, we want the state of Oregon to help fund to reduce homelessness, and I can share with you a draft report that was created. And you can read it and think about it, but I, I would love your honest, direct feedback on this so that I can then take that back to the OMA board, we have a meeting in about ten days. So I'm gonna reach out to each one of you separately, give this information to you, but I want your feedback, you know, and I think about what's going on in North Plains, think about what's going on in the county, think about what's going on in the state, so it's it, it's, it's something that I am, if you have a strong opinion on, great, if you don't have an opinion on, that's fine too, but I am just giving you all a heads up, and I'm gonna reach out to each one of you and ask for your thoughts on that, okay? Because it's important for the, for the OMA board to get that kind of feedback so that we can present realistic expectations and thoughts and needs, et cetera, to, to the state. Right, had a good conference this weekend in Newport, really, really connected with a lot of smaller cities from eastern Oregon. You know, I tried to make it my point to really connect with those eastern oriented cities and then the cities in the south, just the smaller ones, our size is smaller because their needs are equal to ours, but greater, on a greater scale, and it certainly gave me a greater appreciation for our staff and our police force, and it gave me a much greater appreciation for these, these men and women who do the work for us and make us look good and so on and so forth, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of communities out there, small communities out there that just, you know, sewer wastewater, water issues, personnel issues, city reporters who are running cities, doing city manager jobs, you know? In eastern Oregon and central Oregon, and so just saying, we are, we should be so much grateful for our staff, which we are, but also know that there, there's a huge need for the rest of the state of Oregon. And be a board member and just connecting with them, you know, I wanted to just open that up, say, hey, listen, if you ever want to talk to any of us, any of us, our counselors, myself, you know, just, it's, it's a great way to network and connect with them, but met some really great people, had some great we had the mayor of town in Minnesota come out and give the keynote speaker address. And he had a really nice, a nice visit with all of us, very charismatic. But just some good information, the LOC and the Oregon and the OMA will probably be posting some of this information on their website, so if you get a chance, go out on the LOC and the OMA site. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to share, you know, PowerPoints, emails and all that kind of stuff with you, but just some good, good information. but um, just some good, good information, so um, I think, you know, I did my best to represent as well and uh, you know, it was good, it was good information, so uh, that's my report, so thank you all. Any other comments or questions?
I did some uh, walk on the difference, not leaving those doors, I'd like to do that. And uh, we're just talking and, let's go, want to talk about the place. Funding, how it's going, all that stuff. And uh, people are very open to the levy. But they do need some talking about it, so they need some education about it. But we're very open to have the levy, um, we talked about ad nauseam. And uh, this is something that's, uh, the time has come, so it should really be better than that.
Other comments or questions? Staff, oops, no, all right, I'll go ahead and uh, Council Paper, anything from you?
No, thank you.
All right, hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
You're welcome, all right, so I'll go ahead and, and our city council meeting at eight eleven.